How are you doing, Carrie?
I'm okay. Um, I don't think I will be in tomorrow though, because I, I think I'm coming down with something.
Oh, my goodness. Let me find, let me find where I buried the zoom. Oh, here we are. There we are. Oh, that's terrible news.
Yeah, I don't know what, I mean, it started yesterday. I didn't sleep very well. I slept a lot this morning. Uh, sorry to feel better. I had a fever, but it's finally coming down, but I don't know, I don't know what it is. So. But yeah, I think I'm just gonna stay home tomorrow.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I took a COVID test yesterday last night because I got paranoid and I was like, oh my goodness, I really hope it's not that, but I came, it was negative, so.
Oh, good. Yeah, I've had, my body's been, I, I, yeah, I call, you know, cold stuff and.
Oh, you froze.
Right.
I don't know if you can hear me.
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Carrie?
No.
Carrie?
But there you are. You froze for a little bit.
That's so weird because I kept moving my head and I saw it moving.
Huh.
I'm gonna make you the host before I crash. Oh, my goodness. Yeah, cuz I could, uh, just about 10 minutes ago, I haven't been crashing much, but I, a computer crashed and I was like, oh no. Right before the meeting. Okay, so you're officially the host.
Yeah.
Yay. I'm sorry you have this meeting tonight when you're not feeling good, but hopefully you'll feel better soon.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, um, have a good vacation if I don't see you.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Bye.
Bye. Uh, there we go.
Hi, Mary.
Hello.
Hello.
At least the rain didn't knock the power out.
Hi, John.
Hi back at you, John. And to you too, Mary. Hi, Carrie.
Hello.
Where's our fearless leader here?
Well, maybe he's fearful. He just likes to build up the suspense.
If he doesn't come in in a minute or two, I'll try calling him.
Okay. Trying, there he is.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Jeff.
Hi, Jeff.
You there?
Did you?
It's seven oh two, so it looks like we ought to start the meeting. So we have a quorum of myself, John and Mary. Um, John Thompson, which we're, we'll get to as possible alternate. Carrie's here, so let's start the meeting at, uh, seven oh three. June twenty eighth thousand and twenty-three. So Carrie, I can't see the schedule. What's up first? We have some minutes.
The first is public comment.
Okay. So I'll entertain any public comment. Is any out there? Hearing none? What's next?
Education and guidance.
Okay, anyone here for education and guidance on a project? Don't see that, so we'll move on.
Then it would be the minutes from January twenty-sixth.
So, uh, Carrie, can you put those minutes up, please?
Sorry, I have so many tabs open. I have to. Okay, there we go. Can we all see it?
Yep.
Okay. So Carrie, are you capable of scrolling down or can we do that ourselves?
I can scroll down.
Okay. All right. All right, that's good for now. Hold on. Thank, thank you. Okay, keep going. Ah, look at that, the end. Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move that.
One second.
Okay, any, any discussion on those minutes? Okay, so those minutes were approved and in the books. Great. Carrie, what's next?
Think we have to vote, don't we?
Details, details.
Ah. Yes. Okay, roll call vote. Mary David.
Aye.
John Airstun.
Aye.
Jeff Lacy's an aye. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. All right.
Next.
Go ahead.
Sorry, next on the agenda is new associate member.
Okay, um, just, uh, I, I see John Thompson is here. Um, I had, uh, suggested to John that he consider this, and to my surprise, wasn't surprised, he has considered, uh, being an associate member. I believe associate members are actually appointed by the, um, select board. Um, but they generally are, and often look for the zoning board to put, um, prospects forward. So John was, John was the planning board chair when I got on the planning board in nineteen eighty-six. And we served together for many years on the planning board and then, um, and then found ourselves, well, then we were on the Old Town Hall Committee together, we worked on that, and then we also found ourselves on the zoning board of appeals together. Um, John is a, is a builder, um, a carpenter builder, and also a building inspector for the town of Amherst. I, I, I believe he's nearing retirement from that, but, uh, uh, fully steeped in, uh, in zoning and, um, regulatory matters from a planning, zoning board and building inspector perspective. So I considered it a coup when John agreed to, uh, to put his name forward. So I present him here to you tonight. John Thompson.
Thanks, Jeff.
What do you gotta say for yourself?
I, uh, am also, uh, one of the, um, my tasks for the town of Amherst is, um, the zoning enforcement officer. So I've not only written zoning and, um, looked at a lot of zoning, I, um, call people to task for not following zoning. Happy, happy you asked me, Jeff. Um, yes, I'm about to retire September first. I'll have a little more time. I actually uh, served fifteen years on the Shootsberry Planning Board, seven as the chair. Um, I argued a case before the ZBA for a, uh, construction project I was doing down at the lake and about six or eight months later, I ran into Chuck DiMari at Whole Foods and he said, oh, John, you did a masterful job arguing that case. You know what? You'd be good on the board. And, um, that was the beginning of that. I was on that board for ten years. Um, and only really got off because my job in Amherst was so demanding, I just really didn't have time for the ZBA here anymore, but gonna have some time available. I've always thought that a, uh, builder's perspective is valuable on the ZBA. Um, we would have folks come before us with a set of plans and they would say, you know what, this, the reason we want to do it this way is the only way we could do it. It's the only way it could possibly be done. And I would think about that for a few minutes, often sketch something out on my notepad and say, well, here's two other ways that I just thought of. Um, how about that? So, um, always, always a valuable perspective, I think, and, um, happy to be asked to serve. Thank you, Jeff.
Because there, there were periods when, when you, Chuck and I were on the zoning board of appeals. We were the three, I believe. Or, or.
Chuck, Tom Williams. I got Tom Williams to come back and serve.
Right. I, but anyway, um, so I, I, I present, I present John to you board members, um, for your consideration and any questions you might have of him. Why?
No questions, even with credentials like that, we'd be damn fools not to bring John on. I know John in other contexts too and would be delighted, uh, to have him serve with us.
I have no questions either.
So do I hear a motion to recommend John Thompson as our associate ZBA member, um, uh, um, to recommend to the select board, which appoints?
Yeah, heartfelt movement.
Okay, is, is that, is that a motion, John?
That's a, that's a motion.
By John, seconded by Mary. Okay, um, roll call, vote. Mary David.
Aye.
John Airstun.
Aye.
Jeff Lacy's and I.
Oh, it was a landslide.
It was, it was. So, so John, we're gonna take you to the select board, you know, get on their agenda. Bring you forward. I'll let you know when that occurs. Um, I, I'm not sure it has to be a meeting with a quorum of us. Um, we could probably consider that, whether we want to have a joint zoning board of appeals, select board meeting, or whether you just want me to do it as the chair.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be a, a joint meeting, does it?
Probably not, you know, I, I, I can report the results of our talk just now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with you speaking on our behalf, John, Jeff.
Okay. All right, and, um, so I'll let everyone know when that's happening, um, and then, um, John will let you know as well. Okay, great. Carrie, what's next? The white man?
Yes, it says seven thirty, but I'm assuming we probably started earlier.
Um, oh, well, well, here, let, let me fill in, let me fill in a little, uh, gap. It, it's best to try to start hearings on time in case people want to attend and then, you know, tune in at seven thirty and miss things, so, um, I'll speak slowly. But just for, for everyone's information, and I know a couple of people here already know it. But I am, uh, moving away from Shootsberry. And I'm going to be moving to Conway, Mass, which is not far away. Uh, and immediately getting on the zoning board or planning board over there. When that's going to occur, um, at the earliest in the fall sometime, and at the latest at the end of April. So it, it just, it, it depends on the speed with which I can sell my property here in Shootsberry. So while I'm a, a real Shootsberry resident, I'll keep doing that. And I'll do it, I'll do it, uh, particularly with an eye towards, uh, getting this board, um, uh, fully functional with members and associates. Um, I think we should all keep our work here to the ground about other potential members might want to be on here. And bring them forward in a process similar to what we just did with John. And then on to the select board. Ideally, I believe we can have two associates. And, you know, for a three-member board to have two associates, that's pretty luxurious. That's, that's, that's good going. But most important thing is when I step out, there has to be a new chair stepping in.
Are you gonna keep consulting for us?
Am I gonna consult? Well, I do consult for many towns in Massachusetts, but I, I don't consult for Shootsberry because I live here, so, um, if I didn't live here, I suppose you'd just be another town in Massachusetts and I don't know. Uh, I, I hadn't really thought about that. I, I, I know there's a, a planning board matter of. I, I, I know there's a, a planning board matter of lawsuit that was filed by Coles against the planning board in town for the solar regulations that we passed. And I intend to stay involved and active in that lawsuit. Even after I've left town. Which I can do. So we'll see. I, I do have a meeting with town council on Friday. And I'm going to alert her to this situation and ask that that she pay particular attention to the zoning board of appeals and how things are going and maybe attend some of your meetings. Because ZBA stuff is, is just, it's all regulatory. And everything is subject to various aspects of state law. Chapter forty, forty A in particular. And I know that stuff pretty good because of my profession, but and I think John Thompson does too. But there needs to be a bit of a reservoir of knowledge in the ZBA on, on those matters. And I think the town attorney can help you with, with, with those things. For example, in a special permit, and Carrie knows this because she's got the checklist, there's twenty steps that are required to issue a special permit, all the way from having it filed to down through a notice with various boards and a butter to the public hearing, disclosing the public hearing, to getting into the deliberation phase, to making a decision, to reducing the decision to writing, filing it to the appeal period. And then finally popping out at the end after twenty steps with your special permit. You have to adhere to all those things. So there's a lot to this stuff on the zoning board of appeals. I, I, I do know there's a local attorney who has expressed some interest in being on this board. Name of Michael Pill. I'm not sure if he's still interested. He may be very experienced, but also he's litigated in Shootsberry. He has clients in town now and then. So if, if his name comes up again, that could, that's gonna be an interesting discussion for us. I would, I would strongly, strongly recommend that when I go, someone who's both on the planning board and the zoning board of appeals come in here, perhaps off the planning board, and be on both. Because I think that's an excellent conduit of information between two boards who really should be paddling in the same direction. And so many times in towns I've seen, they're going in different ways. They don't know who, what they're doing or who the other people are. There's no connection with the cases and not a good result. So I've been the liaison between the two for quite a while, a long time, ten years. And I think that's worked out well. Both of the boards know what we're, know what we're doing and we've done some things together. So that would be my hope is that perhaps we draw from the planning board, see if we can get somebody to come in and replace me that's already on the planning board. So I'll start hitting those people up.
So you, you know of prospects?
I'd have to think about it. Yeah.
Okay.
Nobody's jumping out immediately. I, I think next planning board meeting, I'm gonna the, the fact that I'm leaving town is like nobody really knows that. You're the first board I've, I've told. So the next planning board meeting, I'm gonna explain it to them. And see if I can get any interest on somebody wanting to join this board as well, you know, to be a dual member. So I'll, I'll do that when the time comes.
And, and can I ask a clarifying question, Jeff?
Sure.
So we'll be looking for a chair, as you say, as, as you, you know, leave officially and are no longer on the board. And that would need to be a full member, not an associate member, right?
Right.
So I don't know, if, if John's premature to ask, but John, are you only interested as an associate member? Are you open to being a full member of the ZBA?
I don't want to be the chair. That's a lot of work, as Jeff could tell you.
I've, I've never wanted, I've been on planning board for twenty-seven years and this one for ten or twelve, I've never wanted to be the chair. Only reason I'm the chair is because I had to be now. But yeah. I like being the technical person who kind of knows the law and can do the research and write the decisions and all that kind of stuff. But running meetings, doing clerical stuff and interfacing with the applicants. Yeah, it's, it's a lot. To do the chair job right, it's quite a bit of work. So.
Wait to say old pitch.
Huh? Yeah.
Jeff, when I was on the planning board and thinking about getting off, Leslie Bracebridge had been the town clerk for, I think, all the time I was on that board. And so I went to Leslie and I said, you know, Leslie, maybe you know the answer to this. How do you get off a board? And she said, huh, let me think about that for a minute. Well, she said, I mean, people have died before.
Oh, my. Yeah, my, my father was on planning boards for over thirty years. Started out in New York State, upstate New York, and then they moved to Vermont and he immediately got on his board there. And he got up to eighty and he was the chair. And the only thing he got, the only reason he got off is he said, he said, I think I'm getting soft and I don't want to embarrass myself. I'm gonna step down. And he did. Otherwise, he'd still be on it.
You're being a hard ass is a prerequisite?
Well, some people like this stuff. It's probably gonna, what's gonna take me to get that, get out of it? Because I'm, I'm gonna get right on the Conway boards when I get over there. I like, I like doing this stuff. I like it a lot. So we're, we're seven twenty-six. We're getting close. Nobody else is showing up. You see, we have Jeff Weston from the planning board. That's good. It's part of why we're here is because of the planning board, the decisions that we made in special permits. Why don't we just give it a few more minutes and then we'll just get it started right at seven thirty like it's supposed to be? Mark, are you geared up to make a presentation of your project?
Um, yeah, I mean, we've, we've been through it with, can you hear me okay? Make sure my, my microphone's on, okay? And first, hello, I don't know, a couple of you, John and Mary and John Thompson I knew from a long time ago. Haven't seen in a long time. How are you? I've been a resident of, or a resident, had been a property owner in Shootsberry for about twenty-five years. Bought some derelict properties that long ago. Went out, my hair was brown and there's a lot of life ahead of me. And I've enjoyed fixing them up and making them decent homes in Shootsberry and have this eighteen acres as well that we had the discussion on. So yeah, I'm ready to, to start the presentation, but Jeff, I'm gonna probably acquiesce and allow you to take it on because, you know, you're the chair of the planning board who put the, or put forth the idea of narrowing this driveway. So I think you'll put a, do a better presentation than I will.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna present your whole project, but I, I can set it up. Or, or Jeff Weston can set it up if he's prepared to do that. I, I tried, yeah, I, I didn't vote on this in, in, in the planning board.
Oh, yeah, right.
I was trying to keep I keep a little distance. So when the planning board voted to approve its special permit for an open space design for your project with the kinds of driveway features that we're gonna discuss tonight, I abstained. But in the broadest sense, this project is, is coming to us after it's been to the planning board. This is an open space design. Eighteen acres, long, narrow, forty-seven foot pole of land that starts at Leverett Road and runs north and then opens up seventeen acres or so of, of land, some of which is, is buildable and some of which is not. And the, the question is, how do you get in there? It's, it's, it's one house. Because of that narrow pole with only forty-seven feet of, of width, that any driveway there, if it was put in properly with a fifteen-foot setback on either side, would run right down the center of that seven, forty-seven foot pole. And it would be twelve feet wide. And that would mean that it could not go in on the current alignment. It would have to create a new alignment at twelve feet of width, take out a lot of trees, and pretty much render the entire forty-seven feet going all the way down eight hundred feet. Altered, changed, de-vegetated, and remade into a twelve-foot driveway. And the planning board decided it, it was not going to approve that type of a permit. It was going to approve a permit where the current alignment was used. And you've all been there. You've seen that current alignment. It kind of goes around that tree to the right and then follows the two rock walls all the way to the back. At points getting fairly tight. Running about eight hundred feet to an open area where a house would be built. That's what the planning board determined it, it wished to see happen. However, in order for that to happen, applicant would have to seek a variance from the fifteen-foot setbacks. Because this, this alignment is not, does not run down the middle of that pole. It's on the west side of the pole. It kind of hugs that property line over there being two or three feet from it. And it's considerably less than twelve feet, which is the driveway standard. It's hemmed in by rock walls and those rock walls are less than twelve feet apart. So the planning board wanted that alignment to be used. Minimal, if any, damage to the rock wall. And that requires two variances from us. So now the project is with us. And the applicant is seeking these variances so he can build his driveway as the planning board wished it to be built.
So you did a wonderful job with my presentation. I appreciate it. I thought if you got going, you'd take care of it.
Yeah, well, yeah, do you want to ask Jeff Weston if he has anything else to add from the planning board perspective?
Um, yes, I, I, thank you, Jeff Lacy. Can you hear me, first of all?
Yes.
Okay, great. I, I would add one thing that the abutter that would be most affected was there and agreed that that would be okay, understanding that the driveway would pass fairly close to one or more of the bedrooms in that house. And so Mark gracefully agreed or decided to offer, and this is my, this is what I remember from the meeting, up to ten thousand dollars, I think you said, to plant arbor vitae according to what the abutter would like and the location that the abutter would like to offer the abutter privacy when the driveway would be closer than I suppose established law would permit. And the abutter was open to that possibility and appreciated your generosity and understood the advantages of moving along the contour that is there already rather than creating, destroying many trees and creating a whole, quite a bit of tumult in that area. So the abutter was in agreement to have that possibility of having the driveway closer than the variant than the law would permit with the agreement that you would plant the arbor vitae. So that's the only thing that I would add to your presentation, Jeff, which was excellent.
And actually, where the driveway is, we're farther away from that neighbor. If we put the twelve footer through, as Jeff said, it'd be in the middle of the, of the forty-seven or forty-nine feet, which would put it closer to that neighbor's property. The other thing that I want to mention is that there was a question that came up is, am I willing to do this? Even if we keep the smaller profile of the driveway as we're trying to do tonight, as I'm trying to do tonight, and kept it away from his house and didn't create what he called the path of destruction, opening that forty-seven feet up so that his bedroom would be exposed to the driveway. And I said I would still spend up to ten thousand dollars on arbor vitae wherever he'd want them to go past the house to give them that privacy. And he could, we could even put him on his land if he wanted to, so we had control over them, how they're shaped, how high they get, et cetera. I think it was a nice compromise. As a matter of fact, there was a neighbor there that night, which was really nice. She chimed in to say she was really happy to see us getting along and trying to work things through. The only other thing that I would, that I would make point of is I think it's about a hundred and fifty feet from the road to the back of the neighbor's property and then it blossoms out to, I don't know, fifteen hundred feet wide or something. So it's not the entire dry that needs to be reduced in width. It's only the area that goes through the stone walls in that, as Jeff said, that sort of forty-eight or whatever it is, wide pole that goes down past the neighbor. So I think after that, I would probably want to be able to go back to a width that is wider than that area. So for plowing and things of that fashion, it makes it more, more simplistic to be able to do that. Though being able to keep it narrow all the way through, I suppose, might be advantageous on the sale. I keep going back and forth. I told you guys I wasn't gonna build after I went through the process and moved to Shootsberry, but you know, I'm in the middle of fixing the house I'm in, as you can probably see from my ceiling. So, you know, building a new house might be kind of, I've done a lot of them, but putting up a house that that would be new for me and built for me would be kind of fun. So I'm still haven't made up my mind whether I'm gonna sell it or, or move there. But and either, either way, I think that this is a wonderful idea that the board brought to mind. It was something that I had thought of earlier, but didn't even think that I could bring it to the board because the regulation for that open space was a twelve-foot wide drive. So for the board to suggest that we keep the current alignment, have the, I think it's at minimum, we, we measured it, it's about nine, nine and a half feet between those stone walls. And the stone walls don't go very far, so it's not impeded by the stone walls for a long distance. But the idea of keeping the tree, that was the other thing, Jeff, that was on the permit, is that we would keep the big tree in front and go around that tree, which I think, you know, keeps that country sort of flair, that look that I think looks really nice in Shootsberry. You won't really be able to tell there's a house back there. The house will be back eight hundred feet. There's a lot of foliage between there and the, where the house will go. South facing, it's just a beautiful spot, very quiet back there. So I think that the drive, because it's a single-family house and it was voted by the board to keep it single, not allowing a duplex, minimizes the amount of traffic that'll be going in and out of there. So I, I don't, I don't think there's any concerns. The only concern, or the only thing I would bring up is to, probably a stipulation on this is to make sure that the canopy above this nine feet is always trimmed so that fire vehicles can get back and forth. Certainly wide enough for them to go down. We want to make sure they have the height as well. So maybe you want to put something in there about restricting the, or making sure the canopy is kept a certain height so that they can get through or just say it's gotta be a height high enough that fire department vehicles can get back and forth. I've thought about anything else that might be necessary for the board to, to to stipulate. That's about the only thing I can figure for that first area.
So, in, in, you know, in, in terms of saddling a single-family dwelling with a long-term maintenance type requirement like that, you know, I mean, say you sell it outright and somebody owns it. You know, that, that they may not even be aware of our deliberations tonight or the permit. Is the, is the canopy something that you Is the is the canopy, um, something that you'd be able to, uh. To take care of during the development of the project before it was sold. You know, run down through there, make sure there's no limbs. You know, even if the road is nine feet wide, that doesn't do you any good if 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 the the vehicles are hitting into limbs. You know, get all that cleared out so that it'll last a long time.
Yeah, um, it hasn't been logged in twenty years, I think, but, um, this area wasn't a place that was conducive for it anyway, this. A little bit deciduous up there, but, uh, we have some other evergreen things of the fashion as well. It wouldn't be, I mean, I I go up there once in a while and clear it out anyway, there's sticks, of course, it'll fall down, things of that fashion. Um, so that wouldn't be a problem, I've got a a logger I've used for years, I'd probably have him bring his cherry picker in and just. Take a saw and and, uh, make a nice tunnel going through there so that we have the canopy up, the other thing too is that the trees. Um, already have a high canopy because they've been so thick in there, as we know, as trees. Uh, fill in space, they can't get the light down to the base of the tree, so the canopies, uh, become higher. And the lower part is pretty open, so that's about where we are right now, is the canopy is pretty thick, so it's keeping the branches pretty high already. But I'll be happy to go through there before I sell it or before I build there, of course, and. And cut the canopy open and make sure it's nice and wide.
Now, that's the type of condition, you know, if this is true, we have the ability to condition it and that would be one of the things that that I would think of.
It's common sense, I mean, I think it's something I would want to do as well, I think it makes more saleable if I'm going to do that, if I'm gonna live there, I certainly want that this be the way it is as well.
So, Mark, are are have you concluded explaining your project in your rationale?
I think you did a better job, I guess.
Well, I was just explaining what happened at the planning board, I'm. I'm not an advocate, I'm just a relayer of what happened at the planning board.
Correct.
So, uh.
Jeff Lacy, could I add something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I, this is my recollection that, um. Part of the, um, rationale for allowing a, uh, more narrow driveway was that it was gonna be a single family home. And that we were concerned that if it was a duplex or more than one family, then the more. Narrow driveway would be an issue, but because it isn't going to be, or at least it wasn't, um, approved as, it was approved as a single family home. Then we were fine with the, uh, more narrow drive driveway, and that's my memory, Jeff, I'm not sure if you can, um, confirm that.
I think that played into it because, you know, by the numbers, he. He 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 could have, um, asked for more. And, you know, more means more traffic, more cars, more, you know, business on the driveway. But it it turned out to be a single family dwelling. That every that we all agreed on and that was memorialized in the permit. Um, it could have an accessory apartment. But but it's it's not a duplex, it's not too full blown, it's it's a. Single family dwelling, maybe with an accessory apartment.
Because of, and because of the situation, the land lends itself to this, that's the right use for the land, and my my feeling as well, so. As you know, I didn't, we weren't arguing that point, I think it made sense for all.
So, were were any of the members? Well, let's see, yeah, members first, like to ask questions or make comments.
So, if I understood, uh, at the end of this driveway is going to be some area. That would be a turnaround for emergency vehicles, is that? Can you just explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so we'll do probably a, uh. Hammerhead turn, I mean, that's pretty standard so that, um, there's a place where cars can, uh, turn around, that, you know, people live there can actually turn around as well. And that'll be available for, um, fire trucks, things of that fashion, emergency vehicles that need to get in and out. You know.
And, yeah, I, um, you know, I walked the land just just the other day, as a matter of fact, and it was just. Really obvious why one would want to site the driveway in the manner that you suggested, Mark, um, the. The thing that 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 impressed me right away, of course, is that it really does favor the west side. So much more, and it's just a very, very small margin, you know, to the property line and. Uh, and I noticed the positioning of the neighbor's house there was really pretty close to the line as well, so. Uh, I was most interested, I guess, to ask about, you know, the, how the neighbor did feel about that, you know, and it sounds like. You guys have talked and and you've made some offers about how you can really create the privacy. That they want, um, you know, along that stretch where it is so close to the travel of the driveway and. Uh, everybody seems content with the solution that's been worked out there, so. That that was, that was the only, I mean, as I say, it just makes, it just makes perfect sense, the way you would have, you'd have so much less disruption. You know, to to. Here in any centered way at all, but as long as the neighbor is, you know, okay with that very close proximity.
John, here's the thing.
Yeah.
And I I speak from the planning board meetings on this one, the the neighbor to the west. I don't believe showed up for any of the hearings, we we never heard from the neighbors of the west.
Oh, wait.
Right.
The one that's that's real close.
On the left, yes, so what it is, is this, there, it's really their, uh, garage that's close to the line, not the actual house. We have been friendly over the years, though we haven't communicated a lot lately, but I gave them the ability to. Uh, go to my land directly from their back land to be able to drop leaves and brush and things on the land for all these years, so I think they're. They're appreciative of the relationship we've had and, um, they haven't come to any of the meetings, haven't made any, uh, had any discussions, I've knocked on the door twice to try to catch them. But, uh, they weren't home and, uh, they, yeah, they've just been very quiet about it because, and again, this is the second time that they've gotten notice, of course. Uh, and chose them not to 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 participate, so it's the house on the right that is farther away, actually. Um, and the driveway would be the farthest away from them because of where we're leaving it. But the young man who's taken the the home over, home over from his grandmother had that concern that, uh, if we're putting this twelve foot. Path of destruction, as he called it, it would also require additional removal on the sides of that driveway to be able to get to fit where where the permit required. So the ones on the left have been, uh, docile and very happy about it, the the kid on the right had some concerns because it was going to go by his bedroom. So he's the one that made the, uh, the agreement to. Fund some trees being installed to be able to give him some privacy in his backyard as well as the house.
I think I noticed in the plans, he was also concerned that construction equipment really be careful around the placement of the septic tank, or no, no, I guess it's the well.
Yeah, and I I tried to locate the well, I can't find anywhere near the driveway. I think his main concern at, when we had this discussion that night, actually, John, is that. Um, he had a couple of things he had brought up and I said, I don't really think those are the things you're worried about, I think you're worried about the privacy, and he goes, yeah, it really is the privacy. I said, so let's approach that and see why we come to an agreement that makes sense to you. And I said, uh, you know, what if we throw a line of arbor vitae up, and I mean, we'll bring in six to eight, eight, six to eight footers, I'm not gonna buy, you know, little two footers. Um, so we'll put a plant in there that's got some ability to to blind this area already from him. Um, and then as of course, as it grows, we all know they'll get twenty, twenty five feet high if he wants them to go that high, it's great lighting there, so shouldn't have any problem growing them. Um, and he was really amenable. And we 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 had a conversation, um, during the board about how he could, uh, what he could do. Um, in the in the process up there, um, so I'm I'm amenable to work with him in any way he wants and that will be, that's in the the permit, actually. Um, special perm that was awarded to me by the planning board to make sure I'm meeting his needs and that those happy met. Uh, to be able to do the driveway and and move forward as well. We'll have a discussion, I didn't want to meet with him until we had this meeting and hopefully get the approval for the drive to go where he wants it and where the planning board wanted. Where I think it should go as well, and, um, once that happens, I'll give him a call, uh, was there ten day, um, on this, if it's approved?
Ten day, ten day what?
Um, where where, uh, somebody can bring it up, or what do you call that? Yeah, thanks, yeah, the appeal, is that, how long is the appeal?
Twenty days.
So I'll contact, yeah, right, so I'll contact him, uh, during the twenty days. And, uh, get things set up with him so that when it does go through and if there's no appeals, then, um, I'll make the. The payment to him if he's going to install them or I'll, um, uh, set up a time where we can start installing them for him. However you'd like to handle it, I had suggested to him that maybe he wanted to put them in, so he'd be able to put them exactly where he wanted, he could save himself some money. Maybe use it for other things, he's got a deck that's in trouble on the house and a couple of garage doors that are missing, and I, I said to him, if you wanted to take it and put the trees in yourself. Um, so be it, but he has to write a letter to the planning board that states that I've made that accommodation to him, so I can move forward.
So it sounds like impact on neighbors are attended to and everybody's happy with things as proposed. See, I guess the other question might be a bit educational for for me, um, and I'm guessing also that. There but there's a rationale here because, um, planning board is already kind of on board with this, but with the twelve foot requirement. Or the width of a of a driveway, uh, I assume that has something to do with passage of vehicles. Uh, primarily, um, safety and emergency vehicles and so forth. And I guess, Mark, I can't imagine anyone being more invested in this than you, but, uh, to know that in fact, nine feet really does the job. In terms of allowing vehicles to get in and out of there, the way they they need to, especially where that narrow section will be. Um, bordered on either side by a stone wall.
Right.
So I guess, again, it it to it to, this really is more of a question, but how how do we. Uh, think about that nine feet being an adequate amount?
It's a really good question, and I had gone through it with the board because, uh, because of my concern with that as well, especially I'm living there. So the first thing that they did was make sure it's only gonna be a single family house, so that reduces the amount of traffic. The second is that, uh, we'll have that turnaround at the very end of the driveway, but, you know, I don't think there's anything, uh, that doesn't allow me to. Put another turnaround if I want to after that first hundred and ten, hundred and twenty feet, um, the other thing to remember is that. Uh, as you, after you get off the road, you start going into the property, it's. I'm gonna guess, what, fifty, seventy five feet before it becomes woodland, so that you have a wide open view right there. So it really is about seventy five feet, not a hundred and fifty and not eight hundred. Where we're dealing with that narrow area, um, going past the backyard of his land. And you've got a really good shot, a good vision going straight through there, it's very straight through those stone walls, and, you know, the stone walls don't. Turn or anything, it's a very straight shot, so I think if, uh, somebody was coming in in a car. Um, they would see anybody else coming up and because they have seventy five feet prior to the. After they get off the road and prior to entering this little, uh, area, they would be able to turn around right there, whether it's grass or whether we put a little turnaround. Uh, before the the area that narrows is, uh, is something I would probably do in construction anyway, because. Again, I want to make sure it's gonna work for where I was living there, and if I sell it, I think that's would make sense if somebody else is going to do that. And I think maybe it's not immediately, John, maybe they, you know, they work with the driveway and they go, geez, I ran to the, you know, to my spouse. Uh, three times now, trying to get in out of the driveway, so they put a little turnaround in somewhere. I I don't know if that'd be requirement to come back to the board or not, I think that's something that was probably something I can just do. Because it's an enhancement to the existing driveway, which isn't anything major, and it's an area that allows construction, so. Uh, I think that'd probably be the answer.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any, uh, members of the public? That wish to speak? Don, did you want to say something? Yeah, please do.
Thanks, Jeff. Yes. I was a little alarmed by the, um. Nine foot width of this driveway, I too walked the property. I was. Surprised at how close it was gonna be to the house on the west there, as you said, Mark, their drive, their, um, garage is very close to their property line. But they've got a little deck and a screen porch in the backyard there that's also, you know, kind of right there, um. And I'm surprised they've not spoken up about this, but, um. I was thinking about my own property that that I developed here on Pelham Hill Road, you know, we. We had to follow those same rules and, um. Where your driveway went was, of course, determined by the setbacks and zoning and, and I look out at. The window here at at a stone wall and I'm thinking, if my neighbor's driveway went two feet past that stone wall, I'd. I'd be upset about that, you know, um. That that's just me, but the other, the other, um, thing I was wondering about was the. I I understand you need two variances here, um, the other one is for the width of the driveway and. Nine feet of driveway seems narrow to me, a couple of questions I have about. That are, um, having walked that. How do you plow that first two hundred feet, where does that, where do you push that snow to, you push that all the way ahead of you, two hundred feet down the line there?
So it's not two hundred feet and that's the, that's the important part of it, it's, uh, it's wide open for the first, as you know, from the road to the wo- the woods is probably seventy five feet back. And then you've got about seventy five feet of nine feet wide, so, yeah, you'd have to push that snow for seventy five feet. Uh, or somewhere in that range to be able to get it to the end where it widens out to the, you know, fifteen hundred feet wide or whatever it is.
Okay, so my, my second question was about, well, just an observation, I, um. I wondered if the fire chief had been. His, uh, opinion had been solicited here and, um, I actually talked to him today, it's, um, Lenny Sorwanka is the Shute Spur Fire Chief now. And he hadn't heard of it, but, um, was. Shocked that a driveway would be nine feet and wondered how he would get a fire truck down that, um. You know, the fire truck is, uh, eight foot six wide, he said, he was not able to go to the. Fire station and measure that today, but that was his recollection of it and as Jeff was saying, if there's. You know, brush or branches or whatever sticking into the right away there. You're gonna take the mirrors off the truck, um, while we've been on this call, I was in contact with the Assistant Chief in Amherst to see. How wide the. Ambulance is, uh, that would respond to your needs, eight hundred feet down that driveway, and he said it's ten feet wide, so.
I don't think a vehicle on the roads allowed to be more than eight feet without a special, without a, uh. Um, a caravan in front and back and back, I thought eight feet was the max. Um, and the other to to where this came up and and, uh, I I don't know which board member brought this up, but the. Board member, uh, had stated that, uh, hit his belief was that there are many driveways in Shute Spray that are. Much more narrow than twelve feet and certainly in the nine foot range, uh, which I'm sure, you know. Preexisted before, uh, these regulations were put in place, they're not forced to widen those driveways. I mean, I was an advocate of putting the twelve, we have this, the area and the setbacks for the twelve foot driveway, it's, um, what we're trying to do is accommodate a neighbor and. And keep the sort of, you know, um. Woodland look of the property so that we're not, um. Taking away from how it looks at this point, so the this was the idea of the planning board, um, I said I'm. Okay with moving forward that direction, I think that it can. Uh, I think the person living there is going to make sure they keep the driveway plowed often, so they're not trying to push six inches or a foot of snow, they're gonna be. Plowing it more often to make sure it's open, but again, that's the homeowner's prerogative and, uh. You know, if I didn't take a tape out there late, uh, lately, but I went out there a while ago and I don't think it's any less. Excuse me, any less than nine feet, uh, six anywhere. Yeah, so, you know, it's, it is what it is, if it's not something the the ZBA feels comfortable with, then. I'll have to go back to the planning board and do the path of destruction, put the twelve footer in, I have the width to do so. Um, the, that is the bio or the requirement of the planning board is twelve feet, they've asked, uh, me to come here and go through this process, so. Here, here I am, trying to make it through and it, I understand your concern, I I. I'm certainly aware that there are other driveways in town that don't meet the twelve foot requirement. I don't think there are any narrower than nine and a half feet or eight feet, but. Not trying to cause, uh, cause a problem, we're trying to so, uh, come up with a solution for the situation that exists.
Thanks.
Well, um, let me add a few observations, I I visited the site, I've visited. I've been visiting the site for ten years, um, visited it for the last time today, hopefully it is the last time. And, um. You know, it 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 is eight hundred feet, but there will be a turnaround at the end. Um, there is not much slope, I would say three percent perhaps. Something gentle, um, slope is what you worry about on the, on long driveways, because you gotta handle the water. Um, it's straight, uh, there's no curves, it's very straightforward. And it's a relatively small area that would require the varying, this would not extend for the entire driveway by any means. It would just be that one. Hundred, two hundred foot stretch. Where it necks down. in order to preserve that that rock wall and and trees in that area. And you know, I I was um, I I measured my own truck today. I plowed it now, and believe me, I know I know a lot about people's driveways in Chutesbury, but they're like, um I'd be happy to get this one to plow, frankly. Um, but uh my truck is a little over six feet in um wheelbase, and that's a big truck. Um, I did go out and I measured the road right in front of this project, the main road, Leverett Road. And the what's called the traveled way, which is the area between the yellow and the white. The white line being on the side and the yellow line being in the center. That area is about nine foot eight inches. That's your travel lane on the main road, right in front of this driveway. So barely any bigger than um than the nine foot that I just proposed for this driveway. Um, twelve feet, which is our standard in town, is equivalent to a mass bike lane. I'm not sure how we got that twelve feet. I think it was a carryover from earlier versions of of zoning that we failed to deal with in two thousand and eight. But that's that's a lane on the Massachusetts Turnpike, twelve feet. Uh, I see very few full twelve foot driveways in Chutesbury. I I I certainly don't plow any of them. Anyway, um I I'm 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 positive the ambulance is not ten feet wide. It it's probably somewhere between the fire truck and and my truck, um, you know, maybe seven feet or something with a dual wheel.
Jeff, I just got a a chart from the Assistant Chief in Amherst of uh overall width and length.
Yeah.
Um, and ambulance is twenty four foot six long and they're nine feet wide. They're nine foot four tall. Uh, pumper is thirty two feet long. And nine foot uh nine foot nine wide.
Does that include mirrors, John?
Not sure. It says overall width.
That'd be mirrors.
Yeah.
So the wheelbase, again, is somewhere under eight feet, because I don't believe a vehicle is allowed on the road that's wider than eight feet at the wheelbase. Uh, we've got some mirrors sticking out, and that's a possibility. But that's why I was talking about making sure the canopy is widened. The canopy can be wider than nine and a half feet. That's not a problem, pushing that back on the sides as well as the top.
Yeah, and that's what Chief Sirwanka was saying too, was that if um, there's one thing, if it's a nine foot driveway and it's got, you know, three foot of nice um gravel on both sides of it, then yeah, if you're you know, the wheels get off the the traveled way, you're you're not stuck.
Yeah, this wouldn't be a stuck issue. The the sides would be, you know, it would be nine feet of 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 crowned driveway that that would that would have rock walls right on either side, rock walls going up at an angle. Essentially keeping you right in the groove there with your with with your larger vehicle.
Yeah, that was part part of my concern when I was bringing up the the nine feet being the section between two walls was that, say, when you do plow, you know, those plows are gonna wanna ke- keep themselves from clipping those walls, right? And so I can just imagine that over the winter, you have a little less than a true, the true distance from wall to wall because of some snow buildup in there. And and I, you know, I'm not an expert on this, but what what actually effectually is the travel path, you know, so it's, you know, I'm guessing it would be okay, but it but it is, boy, it's about as close as you would ever wanna cut it, I would I would imagine.
Fully agree. Yep. I think it's not a perfect compromise, but I think it's a a doable compromise.
I mean, the other the other alternative is um, you know, there's two things that are being asked for here. One is don't make us go down right down the center, because that's gonna blow the whole, you know, that that that's gonna blow a hole in that forty seven feet. We're gonna take out a ton of trees. We're gonna now all the all the that one rock wall. It's 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 gonna be almost forty seven feet of complete construction and um excavation that that everyone's gonna see from the road and the neighbors are gonna see. That's what the neighbors don't want. So the proposal is to use the existing alignment. That puts it off to the west a little bit, puts it close to that property line. Um, so it's off center. Um, that's one proposal. The other proposal is in these narrow parts to let them go from twelve feet down to nine. It's that squeeze through there and preserve those rock walls. So, um maybe the board wants to think about um maybe not going to nine, maybe going to ten and taking out some of the rock walls.
Or just pushing them back so we can preserve them, but we push them back two feet or something. So it's a you know, because there is enough space, I think, to do that. And I don't think there'd be a lot of tree that has to be removed. And if that makes everyone more comfortable, we make it ten feet wide or ten and a half feet or whatever whatever number it is uh without getting into too much destruction, because that takes away from what we're trying to do. But it sounds as though ten feet would do it, so that would uh uh for um, you know, for the concern of pushing snow, um, we have some additional space there. Again, I don't think the wheelbase can be any wider than eight feet, so they give you a foot on both sides, give or take. That you could have snow pile up, uh make sure the canopy is wider um on the sides as well as the top than the ten foot wide drive. I have no problem. I think that's a a decent compromise. Again, if we can, I mean, it's easier to take the stone out, the rocks out, but you know, I kinda like the rock wall, so if we could push it back a little bit and maintain it in a fashion, it's just it's the rock walls are are decrepit. They're very, very old, so it's just piles of stone at this point. But it would be nice to keep those piles there in some fashion. Um, so yeah, I'm I would have no problem with pushing it back to make it, you know, no less than ten feet, let's say, or whatever you guys decide. I'm just trying to work with the neighborhood, you know, and try to make sure we do this as decently as possible. I appreciate the planning board working with me to get this this far, and I appreciate the fact that we're having this conversation now to try and figure out how to make it work for everybody.
Yeah.
So if if the Z B A were to agree on ten feet instead of nine feet, um uh you know, that would involve um um shaving into those rock walls a little bit.
I do just one, Jeff, I think, if that's okay. I think I'd push on one side. We're close enough to that west neighbor already.
Right. And um that would that would require, Mark, that you come back to the planning board for a modification to your special permit.
I don't, did it say, uh, did it give a width on the planning board? I think it's just said between the rock walls or stone walls.
It it said between eight and nine.
Does it?
So
Yeah.
Yeah, so it gave you up to nine. So if you go past nine, you gotta come back to us, unfortunately.
Um, yeah.
So, um anyway, uh
I'm never gonna retire.
I'm I I'm never gonna get out of Chutesbury.
Yeah, yes, you are. It sounds like it. Yeah. Well, either way, I mean, it it's up to the board's discretion for sure. Whether you keep it at, you know, at nine feet, and I don't go back to the planning board, we um push it up to ten feet or whatever you guys decide. Um, you know, I'll I'm I'm willing to do whatever is necessary to make everybody be on the same page.
So
How's that for amenable?
Appreciate it.
So so here's here's uh uh let me just establish where we are in this permit. For variance, we have a hundred days to um to act on it, to make a decision. Uh, we're on day sixty eight right now uh from his initial initial filing. Um we also get um and I have to figure this out. I think it's like special permits, but if we were to make a decision and vote, say, tonight, um, I believe we then have fourteen days to to uh reduce that to writing and file it with the town clerk. So that puts a fourteen day clock on it if we if we vote and make a decision tonight. Um or we we don't have to make a decision. We could we could do something like um what the what we've done in the past is uh based on what I've heard of the board's deliberations, I could go or or the sense of the board, and I'd need to hear from the members. Um, based on the sense of the board without taking a vote, I could go off and write what I thought would be a decision that you would support. And then at the next meeting, we can uh play around with that decision, modify it, put it up on the screen, edit it, and then vote on it. And then the fourteen day clock kicks in. Use it to write and you get it filed. That's much more manageable, um, I think, of a way to do it. Um, the vote, the the vote to approve um has to be three out of three. So we all have to, we have to be unanimous. If we were a five-member board, it would be four out of five. Seven-member board, it would be five out of seven. But with a three-member board, it has to be three out of three, so we all need to agree to approve this. We don't agree, we can't approve it, and it's denied. Once it's approved, it's good for a year. So he has to go take some action within a year to demonstrate that he's used his his variance.
Right.
Um I think that's that's sort of where we're where we're sitting. We've got um sixty eight, we got about thirty two more days here.
So how how long is the uh open space, the planning board uh approval good for?
Two or three years.
Okay, so it's not gonna conflict with I don't wanna run out of time there before I get the approval through through here.
No, you'll, you'll you'll run out here first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So obviously, um, you know, the the process is um is extended uh pretty heavily if we go to a ten foot wide pass. Um but if that's what it takes to get the approval, then you know, I'm amenable to that, and I'll go back to the planning board and have them do a revision to the permit they approved. Uh, I don't think that's, again, I'm not asking Jeff's opinion or or either Jeff's opinion about the planning board, but from our conversations, I don't think that's going to be a hurdle. It's just a timeframe thing. So we could go that direction, or you uh leave it at the nine six or whatever it is, between eight and nine feet. And um I I or the person that builds there deals with that whatever it is, distance. I think it's somewhere around seventy five feet where it actually is narrow, where the two walls are. I think it's a lot less where the where the walls are, but if you're saying nine feet, then it wouldn't matter if there's a wall there or not.
My sense of what the planning board was most interested in is being able to use the existing alignment.
Right, right.
Preserving the rock walls in intact was desirable, but secondary.
I agree. Yeah, so if we have to push one, I don't think that's a big deal.
Right, but it 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 still it still gets you into that existing alignment, avoids all that uh excavation, tree cutting and 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 destruction that the the neighbors don't want.
I agree.
Right.
Yeah. Can I, I mean, is it okay to ask uh the other board members, Mary and John, what you're what you're thinking, or is that uh allowed? To get a a feeling as to what your thoughts are regarding uh whether you wanna, I mean, maybe need one of these work for you, but if if one of these two that we're proposing or suggesting anyway that had been suggested is leaving it at the nine feet or uh pushing it to the ten feet and having me go back to the planning board to get the permit adjusted. Um, do either of those um have a an interest to or to or give an interest to to make this work?
Mary, you want me to go first?
You can go first.
Yeah, um I I I really want this project to to work. Um, I'm, I I like a lot of what I'm seeing, you know, with the way this is conceived, and I think it's gonna be a beautiful home back there for someone
Yeah.
If I was personally living there, you know, uh I would be a little freaked out by a a passage that was in any way compromised for safe um it's emergency vehicle entrance and exit. Um, and if if the notion of just buying another foot, you know, with a relatively, I mean, I know it would be some logistical hassle, but
Yeah.
but it doesn't seem like it would be a ton of work, you know, to kind of just get a little piece of excavating equipment in there and pushing that that one wall over a little bit. It's not like that either wall, as you said, Mark, is a work of art. They're 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 both rubble, uh, you know, so it's not like it's a it's an aesthetic thing. It's just retaining walls where they've been historically, right? I I I just personally think, you know, as as someone who might see myself living there, I won't, but but or someone who would buy this property down the road.
Yeah.
It it just seems like a reasonable um safety margin um to inject into the formula. Um so, you know, that would be my preference. I I don't I don't know that uh to say it was gonna stay at nine feet would be a deal breaker for me. But I'm just stating what I think makes more sense to me and what I would feel more comfortable with. Um, that's that, I think that's the best way uh for me to say that. The the other thing that I'll probably just mention since I have the floor is that uh again, if I if I was the property owner to the west, I mean, it's really ironic that your conversations about privacy and so forth have been with a guy on the east, you know, but the guy on 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 the west uh it it's right there. It's it's just, yes, right. It's just right there. And I guess all I can say about that is um, while I wouldn't particularly uh like it uh to have cars going back and forth that close to my to my uh, I think there's a deck back there or something. I can't, I don't remember. I I remember looking at a little bit, but um, if the neighbor is seems okay with it, you know, and you've, I mean, it it's not that you've really talked about it. I guess there just hasn't been any uh protest lodged, you know, um then, again, that's that's something I could I could look past. It's again, it's how do I how do I speak for how I would feel? And how calc- how does that how does that impact what I think should be done regarding the project in general? So those are my, those are my reservations. That's my preference for the width. Um, but I, again, I don't see anything that is uh would stop me from voting in favor of this. Um, it's just, it's, as you said, you've you're you're being upfront, it's less than ideal. But um I think workable. So, Mary, what do you think?
Thank you. So you'll probably say it more eloquent than me. Um, I agree on the ten feet to the nine feet, kinda makes me a little a little anxious. Um, so I think I'm, and I think that's a fair compromise for for dealing with the safety issues. Um, you know, the neighbor being there, I'm not quite as worried about, given where I live. I probably have that, you know. I have less of a luxury with all the houses around me that cars and things are sitting right there for most people. Um, you know, this uh this seems like it's still pretty isolated. You know, even if it is right there. Um, I have more traffic that's probably closer than that to me, so that doesn't kind of worry me as much. Um, but I would like to see it. Probably I could agree on ten feet. I don't, and and I don't see any real issues with not going forward with it.
Appreciate it. And and I think both make a good point that uh, John, your comment about, you know, it's not perfect is is a is a good point. And Mary, you saying ten feet. I think I'm hearing two people who live in town and you're sort of giving me an idea that if I'm going to sell it, it probably makes more sense for me to go through the process of having to go back to the the planning board and get them changed a little bit to call it ten feet. Instead, it'll probably be more saleable, um, because people, if you're, if two of you are having a little bit of concern about that width, even though the town road, which I think is really interesting, Jeff brought that up, um, the drive path for one lane is only nine and a half feet. Um, but there's room. If you had to go in the other lane, you could, or if you had to go in the little breakdown lane we have, you could. You know, that's not what you have as an option here. So I would agree to the ten feet. Um, I'll go back to the planning board and have an amend. I don't think there's gonna be a problem with the planning board at all. It's a matter of time, that's all. Um, one of the things that is pushing me is the observation approvals. Uh, um, I think that's the only one that's a perk test. You know, have a time uh limit on them, so I just wanna be able to get these in place, so we're not doing everything all over again. But if that's what it takes, that's what it takes, so. Um, I guess that where I'm standing or what I'm hearing right now now is that the uh two of the three board members will be more comfortable at ten foot wide uh are willing to vote on that tonight. I'm not putting words in your mouth, I hope, and that you see us going forward with this tonight. And and um, I would agree to that. Jeff has made, I said a good point that And um, I would agree to that. Jeff has made, I said a good point that uh. Uh, there are other driveways for his plowing, he knows that are narrower, but we don't want to create another issue and, you know, problem. We're trying to do something that's gonna be positive. So in, you know, I'm thinking on my feet, but in retrospect, um, you probably just give me a much better sales tool. It's a to, you know, sell the land, and if I'm gonna live there, you're probably making sense. You give me a little bit of. Uh wiggle room in there if there's a big storm or, you know, plow truck doesn't get up there fast enough or something in that fashion. So. I would, I would agree to that and uh and go forward if you folks are willing to go forward.
All right, let me suggest.
Think I'm losing the uh.
Um, if if there aren't any other comments, let me suggest to the board that um. We have until the end of July, July thirtieth, before our hundred days are up. Um, we made our decision on the hundredth day, we still get fourteen added on to that to. To uh get it to writing and file it, but um, but once we vote, the fourteen kicks in. So we vote early, the fourteen kicks in early. So I think we need to have. We need to uh, I'm I'm suggesting that I will write a a proposed draft decision. That reflects what I think happened here tonight, based on the minutes and and my recollections and notes. And at our next meeting, which will occur before the end of July, uh, we can look that over, we can modify it. And we can vote on it. Then the fourteen days.
So my. My opinion is that, again, just an opinion, is uh, I think we have one issue and that is, do we go to ten feet wide? I'm acquiescing to ten feet wide. I don't think there's anything else that we're discussing that um needs, it wasn't like the planning board where there's multiple multifaceted. Um, I would agree to widen the canopy uh so that it's at least that ten feet wide and. Height that will accommodate the highest fire truck that we have in town. And uh, it's it sounds like we have all the parameters. Um, dealt with. I guess maybe the only concern you have is getting it written in time to be able to meet the fourteen days. So I don't know if the other board members feel like they want to move forward with a vote tonight, or they feel as though they should have Jeff write this and then come back before the end of July. That's my two cents.
Yeah, there there are, there are some other, you know, other minor issues. There's a place where the driveway. Uh, looks like it can shut water off to the west into the neighbor's property. Um, I would want. Some mitigation, so not a lot of water would be uh sent off into the neighbor's property. It's kind of an opening and. It appears as though some water has gotten through there in the past. Um.
He he opened that, Jeff, so he could access my land to be able to go back. Um, and put his, you know, leaves and stuff back there. That wall was was there. He he opened it up so he could get access to my property. So it's not a problem for him in the fashion, but all all water, as the plan shows, will go down the drive on the sides. To the back where we have that uh that resource area in back, so.
You never get any water, you you never get any water coming through there from your driveway?
Oh, I have no idea because he he did it. He opened it up, so it doesn't bother him, obviously, because he's he's the one that opened it up twenty or ten fifteen years ago when he moved in. With my permission. Uh, but if, you know, if you think it's better to have the stone wall put in place, back in place there, then I can explain to him. I just. Uh, he's not gonna be able to put his leaves back there anymore, so I suppose it doesn't serve any purpose. Will you put the stone wall back in place or burn it or, you know, do something?
Oh, the condition would just be a slight burn so that they keep the water in the driveway alignment, not let it off property.
I think that, I think that.
Yeah, the 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 new owners for your property may not want to have anything to do with the neighbor and and may stop letting them put leaves in there.
Um, right.
So and and then we don't want to generate a new complaint um based on, well, your water's coming over in my direction, so. You know, maybe just build that up a little bit so the water stays in your alignment.
Yeah, what I was referring to is I think that the plan actually shows the water must uh travel down the driveway. Uh, north to the back resource area. So whatever is necessary to do that uh in any area on it. Uh, especially in that narrow area. I think it wouldn't matter if it goes side to side and then goes north. Once we get out of the narrow area. So yes, that's, that that would be something we'd do no matter what.
Well, I I recommend still doing it so that you folks have a decision to look at. With um any conditions that I might um think of. Um. And then conditions that you may think of after your, after we leave here tonight and you think about this project and um. So I don't like to hurry votes. I like to to write a decision, let all the members think about the project. Then you come back and you have a decision in front of you. You can see what I wrote, and then you're free to add or subtract. From that. Um, that's the way we've been doing it in this board for years and years and years and years, and it's worked well. And it doesn't, it doesn't delay things um much at all, um, especially if we meet. Um, fairly soon in July. And that could also be the same for the next permit we're about to do. So you could see decisions for both of those permits.
Sounds reasonable.
What do you need? A motion, Jeff?
I I need a motion to um to continue the deliberations on this case until such time. As we meet again and can review a draft decision.
And can you put in that you're going to try and meet sometime in early July? I mean, I know you have till the end of July, but you had mentioned that you would try and get together in the beginning of July.
Yep, we'll do the, we'll do the meeting triage calendar thing in a moment. Yeah.
Carrie has a question there.
I'm just curious if um you're closing the public hearing or not.
Yes, I think we need to, we need to do that. So.
So you need a motion, you need a motion to close the hearing before you decide to continue it?
I just want to make sure that John or Jeff, um, I see other people here, but there for the other case. So Jeff or John have anything else to add before we close the public part? Okay, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Aye.
Um, Mary David, aye. John Airstock?
Aye.
Jeff Lacy's an aye. So, okay, public hearing closed. End of deliberation. Although we have been. Um. So um, so now, after our discussion about how to proceed, do I hear a motion that we. That we table this pending um my producing for you a draft decision. Um, at our next meeting for us to uh to finalize and vote on.
Yeah, I'll I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, uh roll call vote. Mary David?
Aye.
John Airstock?
Aye.
And Jeff Lacy's an aye. Okay, um. What looks good for next meeting? In the month of July. I'm around almost all month.
I think Carrie's got a question again.
Carrie's got vacation.
Yeah, I'll be gone until I can come back that July twelfth.
Okay. Thirteenth?
Um, yeah, I'm I'm gone on the fourteenth for a for a while, but the thirteenth I can tuck it in. I I think, I think we do owe it uh to to move this along as quickly as we can, so.
Excellent.
I would.
First for me, the thirteenth is the COMCOM meeting, so you could do it, did we do it earlier? I don't know if I'm doing it on that day, but. You would have to be. They've been starting to meet at six o'clock.
They go for a while, so.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, you'd have to do like a five thirty meeting that we're, if this is gonna be the only topic or I'm not.
Um, probably finalizing the next um, the next case as well. So um, that would work for me. ZBA at uh, say five. Let me make sure we have enough time.
I I I would make that work.
Yeah, I can make that work.
That works for me as well.
Okay, the next meeting is July thirteenth at five o'clock. And. Mark will 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 get you voted on and finalized then.
Sounds great. You guys, it's break. Sounds great. It's breaking up a lot. I'm sorry. I'm catching, you said uh July thirteenth at five P M?
Yeah.
For your, yeah, for your information, for your information, Mark, um, I think the next planning board meeting is July tenth. So we should be able to um deal with that issue on the tenth and then the zoning board on the thirteenth.
Can can you deal with it pri, oh yeah, you can, you can deal with that prior to the ZBA meeting. That'd be wonderful. So if you can get me on, Carrie, can you get me on until I tend?
Yeah, I can contact them.
That's great. Thank you so much for the help. And I, this sounds cliche, I guess, but um, I appreciate. Everybody that does this. I know you don't get paid for this. It's volunteer work, takes a lot of time, especially the chair job. And uh, if you guys didn't do this, uh, towns would not be able to move forward with any of these things. So. As a taxpayer in town with two properties, um, I do appreciate very much that you folks. Are willing to volunteer. I'm hoping as I retire, I'll be able to find time in my schedule to do that in Deerfield as well. Um. And I I just, I just think it's an amazing thing that people are able to give their time to do these. So thank you very much. I don't, I'm not uh, I'm not dressing you up or you already voted, so. I wanted to wait until the vote was made before I say anything.
I thank you, Mark. It is a volunteer job, so I appreciate your understanding of that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, you guys have a great night. Appreciate it.
Take care, Mark.
Bye bye.
Okay, it's work it's much later. Let's move on to um the next case. And I see we have Teresa Ross and Jesse?
Yep.
Uh, and Satchel Douglas.
Satchel's my son.
Okay.
I'm I'm here representing Valley Solar uh for this project.
Okay, um, let me just introduce the project and I'll turn it over to whoever wants to present it. Um, this is an a- application by Valley Solar on behalf of Teresa Ross for. Uh residential property at five thirty West Pelham Road. For um ground mounted residential solar. Um, panels not on the roof, panels, um, freestanding panels in the backyard. And I I take it everyone visited this site to take a look at where these are proposed to be?
Yeah.
When the driveway on the left, kind of down a little bit, um, not quite to the woods, still on the lawn, white flag. Right down there. And. We require a site plan review for these. Um, it's a long time ago, we decided what we're mostly looking for is that. These facilities are not um unduly um. Upsetting or in 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 a neighbor's face. Um, if if there are any near the property line. Um, that's usually what we look for, impacts. Uh from the street and impacts uh from neighboring properties. So, let's see, twenty four panel ground mounted solar array, nine point six. Uh kilowatts D C. And then trenching. Back to the house. Okay. All right, take it away.
Uh, my, let me see if I'm able to, are you able to allow me to share my screen? Is that possible?
Yes, you're all set.
All right.
And this is not a public hearing, um, so we didn't have to formally open a public hearing. It's a. It's a, just a discussion.
Gotcha. Okay, so um, like he said, this is a twenty four panel ground mount array. Uh, that in the code, that puts it under eight ten dash two. As requiring a site plan review from the zoning ZBA and a building permit and any other applicable provisions. But it doesn't put it in the category of. Other large scale and small scale ground mounts where there's, there's a whole bunch of other stuff in the zoning. And I believe my interpretation is that all applies when it does not provide electricity solely for one residence. Um, but I can go over that clause if we have any uh discrepancy. I can go over the the frontages. If you look at my screen here, we have a hundred and sixty eight feet from West Pelham Road. So that's the front setback. We have a fifty foot setback. Uh, on the north and then hundred and two, essentially, hundred and nine setback. On the south end of the property. Um, to my understanding, the one hundred and sixty eight. Foot setback from the road, I don't think this will be visible based on what I'm seeing on the LiDAR. Um, it looks like a a relatively forested area. And I'm sure if you went to site, you'd you'd be able to see that as well. The other thing is we were able to get a wetland specialist out there in the last week. I'm not sure if any of you have that report on hand. It's quite lengthy, but. We've, the wetland specialist founds, and his name is um. Ward Smith from out of Wendell Wetland Services. He found, he measured with a tape that the only portion of the property that could be considered to have a wetland, and he has. Some specifications on what he meant by that, that I can go over, but it's a hundred and sixteen feet. From the closest point to the wetland, and this is uh southeast of the array. And I can go deeper into that wetland if anyone has questions. I. I believe this was uh forwarded, I don't know who it was forwarded to on the board, maybe everyone. Um, let me know if you don't have that documentation. I'm happy to pass that along.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
It was signed, it was signed off on by the conservation.
Oh, it, okay, gotcha. Great.
Okay, um, a couple of questions about the wetland. Was it a isolated wetland or a connected wetland?
Sure, uh, definitely isolated. It was considered um. And is isolated land subject to flooding is. It, so it was too small, by far too small to qualify as isolated land subject to flooding. Um, so it, but it's still subject to Chutesberry Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Um.
So so did it, was it found to be less than a thousand square feet?
Yes, let me, sorry, I'm just looking over these notes. They're quite extensive here. Um. Yeah, so less than, less than a thousand square feet and the other important qualification for that is that the area must contain. A quarter acre foot of water to an average depth of six inches at least once per year. Um. It is clear, so this specialist says it's clear this wetland is far too small to qualify as an I L S F. So, yeah, we're well below that.
Okay.
The, he also mentions this wetland is underlined by hydroic soil soils and. It appears to be created by damming of water by a down gradient stone wall. And it's isolated from all other wetland areas, he says.
Okay. All right.
So, yeah, and I can, the other specifications of this array, it's roughly fourteen by thirty eight feet. So fourteen north, south, thirty eight feet, east, west. And as far as the construction of it. We have been using for quite a while this company that uses helical piles, which are ground screws. So we feel that this is much less invasive than some other ground mounts will use larger augers and will bring in concrete. But we don't, we don't use any of that. This is just a mini skid steer is the equipment. And there's helical piles driven in. And this project, I depends on the site. I believe this one's around eight helical piles. I'm sorry, six, so. That's a little bit about the construction. And. Yeah, I, the overall height listed in these documents is ninety six point two five inches. Which, let me just. Make sure in layman's terms, it's about eight feet on the highest. I would, I would say I'd like to pass this for up to eleven feet, just in case we want to raise that leading edge height. But if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer. And I also have a photo of the proposed site if if anyone wasn't there. And. So it's, it's pretty close to the house. Like I said earlier, I don't believe there's any sightlines from that main road. And it looks to me like there's no sightlines from the closest neighbor, which is fifty feet from the array. Due to the forest on the north of the array. You know, I I haven't actually walked this property, so I'm not sure if there's any gaps or certain times a year, but that's. What it appears to me and with LiDAR, looks like it heavily forested on the north. But that's, I mean, that's the long and short of it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to go over. Anything that I covered in more specifics. I know the homeowner is also on the call. If she wants to comment on any of the the sightlines of this array.
I have one question.
Sure.
It is. Does, does the array produce more than? Twice as much energy as the home uses?
No, we actually are, you know, we have some limitations on the irradiance at the site. So, you know, depending on, I don't know, future electric loads, but we're below a hundred percent of homeowners usage. So we're, we're nowhere near the the double mark.
Okay, and 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 you're not even up to a hundred percent of of the homeowners usage.
No, and that's just based on a limitation of the site. So it's just because this is quite forested, we're not getting a hundred percent irradiance. So this isn't like in a wide open field.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Do any other members have any questions about that, having visited?
Yeah, there, there are two things that would help me with kind of visualizing and it actually might have to be Teresa that addresses this because. Yeah, if you weren't there, Jesse, I guess you wouldn't. Wouldn't necessarily know with 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 regard to the wetland that you mentioned. And you said it's southeast of the array. So where does it fall? But I see there's a little outbuilding back there. Where does the wetland fall relative to that? Outbuilding.
Good evening, I'm Therese Ross. And so the outbuilding that you're talking about. The. It's. To the east of that. And it's a tiny little wetland area.
Okay, okay, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought as I was listening. The, the other thing is, when I went to the site and I was noting the white flags and so forth, I mean, I could see, you know, where the path was for the conduit from the house. You know, to the, to the array, the, I was a little, a little confused exactly how those flags all, you know, lined out that, that rectangle. Is it, is it in the garden? Is it actually going to claim part of your gardener? Or is it all to the north of your garden?
So the vegetable garden or where you saw some raspberries?
Well, there was, it was a rather big plot, a rather big wooden plot.
Yeah, so you may have seen some wooden posts that have some wild growing raspberries in there. It will actually, it will take the place of those raspberries.
Okay, okay, that, that's, that's, that's what I was thinking must be the case because otherwise it seemed like it would have been. Really quite a lot closer to the property line than the, than the schematic indicates that it is. So. Yeah, okay, that's, that's really helpful. Thank, thank you, Teresa.
So what are you, what are you reseeding the trench with afterwards then?
Uh, that would just fill in with grass. Is that what you were meaning?
Can you, I'm sorry, I didn't say it again?
Maybe the inner, the trench would just be reseeded with grass seed.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe most, if not all of the trench is just crossing through grass. I think this is a pretty simple, simple one. As far as our trench goes, that's a separate permit, of course. But it's about twenty four inches wide and we have to go for electric code, we have to go to eighteen inches to the top of the conduit. So it's a pretty narrow trench. I mean. I don't know off the top of my head, but generally like this would only be a one and a half inch conduit, two inch conduit. Just, just to give you some context, that's what that looks like. And for more context on the shed, I was looking based on my imagery. So the wetland specialist said it's a hundred and sixteen feet southeast of the array. That puts it for context about seventy feet further east from that shed. So the wetland is really what looks to me like right on the line, the tree line in the, the rear of the property. And I can, yeah, let me know if you have any other questions on that. I've got a whole, this guy was super in depth. He listed. Different. Species of plants and I think he did a really good job of marking this out.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak about this project from the public who might happen to be here?
I'd like to make a general comment if I, if I could. I've had no experience, obviously, with this particular project, but I have dealt with Valley Solar. For probably, you know, at least seventy five hours of putting their own panels on our roof. And I just want to say how. Competent they are and thorough and they were just really. Really impressive in terms of their project. So I know that this isn't directly related to the solar array. But I do want to comment on Valley Solar's efforts with myself. That's all.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, my only other comment is that when I did stand on the site and kind of. The word, it seemed like the array was going to be and kind of did a panoramic of. You know, views and it didn't, it seems to me like the array really is situated in a way that is not going to be. Offensive or highly visible, you know, or anything like that to to neighbors. So, you know, from a, from the standpoint of just assessing its. Aesthetic impact. I didn't see any issues at all with that, with that placement, so.
So with. With. Members' permission. I will also draft. Ooh, unless someone else wants to draft. A site plan review decision on this project. Someone else wants to draft with my assistance. The, the permit. Permits really just fill in the boxes and stuff and there's a little bit of pros in there, place for conditions, so. And, and have that ready for the next meeting in July. So we can get a load of the decision, make sure it's one we like, vote on it and. Get, get both of those decisions filed.
Well, I'm not, I'm not making any commitments in doing this, but I do want to be a good team player, so I'll, I'll, I'll volunteer to. Work with you, Jeff, unless Mary, unless Mary is just frothing at the bit to do that, you know. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind helping you out with that.
No, go ahead. I'm still learning the pieces too.
Okay. Yeah, this is good. The permit writing is, is something that has to be done and. I'm, I'm happy to get somebody else going with it. So John Airstock, site plan review. Permit here. Okay. Yeah, there's, there's templates for these and I'll, I'll, I'll get it to you. A lot of the information on, on the, the permit can come right off the application. You know, the, the name, the representative, the owner, the address, all this stuff. Carrie usually gives me. Case numbers. She keeps track of the case numbers. That goes on there someplace. And then any types of, of conditions. I think this one's going to be very simple, pretty much almost permitted as applied for. So.
Could you send me the template too, so I can take a look at what, what he'd be doing?
Okay. Members, okay. Will do. Not tonight, tomorrow. Alrighty. So are, are, are we in? Are we in agreement on that approach? Do I hear a motion to follow that approach that I just outlined for this, for this permit?
Motion, I'll make a motion to follow that approach.
Second.
Okay. Hearing no discussion, Mary David?
Aye.
John Airstock?
Aye.
And Jeff Lacy, you're a aye. Okay, so that's what we'll do with that one. Anything else, Carrie, on our agenda?
No, but I have two questions. Is that also meaning you're closing this public hearing as well?
This was not a public hearing.
Oh, you're correct, yes, okay. Um, the only question I had was Jesse, do you mind sharing your last name for me for the minutes?
Uh, yeah, Bracklebaum, let me just put that in the search chat. It's B, B R E K. E L. B A U M.
Thank you all very much for taking the time this evening, but also thank you to those who are able to come out and check out the site. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Okay, and. Just before we go off, off of this case, but so I'm going to go ahead. Maybe we covered this a couple hours ago and I forgot it, but I'm, I'm going to go ahead and reach out to the select board and tell them we have an associate. Member candidate and, yeah, we did this already and, and, and get a meeting there. John may want to show up. Yeah. So.
Yeah, I'll show up. Just let me know, Jeff.
Okay. All right, very good. So do I hear a motion to adjourn if there's no other business?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mary David?
Aye.
John Airstock?
Aye.
And Jeff Lacy, I'm an aye. Okay, that didn't go too badly.
Very good. Learning every time. Thank you.
See you guys in July.
Okay, it's a deal.
Tonight.
Night.